With me, I'm going to ask Clerk Straight to start us off in prayer.
All heaven and the Father, we thank you we can come together this morning to consider the business in front of us, and we pray your guidance and blessing on all that said and done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Clerk. And if you'd remain standing for the pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the meeting of the Hampshire County Commission to order Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And good morning, everybody, and welcome to the county commissioner meeting. Thank you for coming. We will start off with the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, gentlemen, from our regular meeting and our special meeting we had last Monday. Clerk got those to us ahead of time, so I would entertain a motion to address anything that needs corrected, and if not, a motion to approve those as presented.
Move that we approve the minutes, both sets as presented?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for both sets of minutes for both previous meetings to be approved as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. We'll move on to the commissioners' reports. I will start off. Last week, I attended the Hampshire County PSD meeting. They have been busy the last couple of years and continue to be busy. As most of you know, projects in, out to Slainsville and in Purgatsville. Both of those projects, they are working through the finishing stages. Many things are complete. They are going back on those large projects like that. Many times, there's, there are things that have to be adjusted and brought, brought up to par. If, if there is some small things that are not, that's what they're going through on, on those projects currently. For the most part, pretty smooth. Some of them have caused some time delays and so forth, but they are working through that. They also have yet another project coming, and just let me look up my notes here, which is kind of a, like a catch-all miscellaneous project, and it's water system improvements on, water system improvements phase three. And what that will do is replace all water meters in Springfield and Greenspring with radio red meters, refurbish the Main Street pumping station with new electrical and pumps and backup generator, and refurbish the Sunrise pump station with new electrical pumps and pressure tanks. Funding for that was I, JDC Infrastructure Jobs Development Council, five hundred thousand and another five hundred thousand from CWSRF Clean Water State Revolving Fund administered by the DEP. Looking down through here, most, anything else I could report on, we will probably talk about in the agenda, so I will pass the floor along to Commissioner Mance for his report.
Thank you, President Eglinger. Trying to think. Last couple of weeks, primarily focused or worked a little bit with our planning office. New staff in there is getting up and running, kind of refining process, looking at the way that we do things. There is a ordinance that they're trying to revise, which is a Hampshire County Building Permit Ordinance, which kind of lays out what our permit process would look like at the county level so that the public can access it and so that they can have something to reference each and every time that a permit comes in. So we've been working with that office to kind of refine that, and I believe they're going to bring that to the Planning Commission for, for approval as well. But essentially, what it is, is something that the, the public can look at and see, hey, what is the process, start to finish, whenever we apply to build something in Hampshire County? And, you know, also, it's kind of customized to the workflow that our staff has already kind of set out. So that's the, that's the goal in developing that policy. Been working with them a little bit on that, and I think they've done a pretty good job of putting together something to bring to the Planning Commission. The next major one that I did was I attended a meeting with the, we got JT with the Development Authority, Candace with Extension, Candace Long with Extension, and Tina Ladd with our CVB. We went out as a Hampshire County delegation to meet up with Shepherd University's Farm Incubator Program. So it was something that we heard about when Treasurer Peck came in town and we got the connection made. But really, what we were looking for is opportunities for possible collaboration on getting our farmers access to resources that Shepherd has and wants to make available to us, and also to see whether or not there's anything that we can learn and then bring back here to make, you know, all of our agricultural operations here in Hampshire County be able to benefit from, you know, a program that's deliberately designed for that in, in Shepherd. We walked away from it with a couple of immediate touchpoints. It sounds like there are rural scholarship opportunities for us to send, you know, young folks that want to actually take over legacy farms to go get, you know, financial planning training. And then there are also opportunities for our farms right now that want to look into a new business kind of model. Shepherd University can provide for free business plan development for our farmers. So just trying to figure out the resources that are out there and how we can connect those, you know, with the folks here in the county. And that was, that was what the meeting was. It was really productive, and I think we're going to circle back on that, and hopefully something, some more good stuff will come out of it. The rest of everything I worked on, we can cover in the agenda. Thank you, President Eglinger.
Thank you, Commissioner Brill.
Thank you, President Eglinger. Just a few things. A lot of what I would report on is also going to be in the agenda. Just continue to attend the community meetings. I think we have one final community meeting as it relates to the comprehensive plan next Tuesday evening, and that's here at Romney. I did a meeting with, probably as everyone has since our previous meeting with NextEra, just prior to them putting out the new proposed line for the, the Marl line. Again, not a lot of information from them, really. A lot of the same that they had, they had been talking to us about before. They continue to talk about producing big, big income numbers for us, but I see little verification from them from any of that. Also attended an LEPC meeting. It was a good meeting. We just, they discussed, bulk of the meeting, they discussed the Everbridge system that's currently utilized by the county and some of the upcoming changes and upgrades that are going to help improve that system moving forward. Farm Land Protection Board meeting last Thursday, and then I also have a meeting scheduled this afternoon with the folks from CPV in Cape and Springs and Farms regarding some updates as it relates to the proposed wind farm in Cape and Springs. So everything else I have will be discussed in the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brill. All right, we are just a little bit ahead of schedule. Clerk, did you have anything you wanted us to address there that's quick?
Make a motion and we approve the exonerations as submitted by the assessor?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the exonerations. It's submitted by the assessor since our last meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Also, gentlemen, we have a retirement letter here from Ms. Leah Kidner. She, as you know, she worked over at the Extension Office through the county for many years, and she has decided to retire and use her sick leave there for the remainder of her time. So, and I believe both you gentlemen had a chance to review this, but if you want to look at it again, it's here. If not, I would approve a motion that we accept that retirement proposal.
I would move that we accept the retirement proposal, or retirement proposal as presented, and also just to say thanks to Ms. Kidner for her time and service to the county.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the letter explaining retirement from Mrs. Leah Kidner, and we do thank her for her service. She's been here quite a while, so thank you again. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Yeah. All right, next on the agenda, we have Ms. Leanne Wiki, Len Two Solutions, with an update on the apprentices program that the commission helped get that started there. So if you would come up. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm here for Mr. Straight.
Thank you much.
Provide afterward, it's just a documentation of some of the key points of my remarks that I thought we'd have for you. So, good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having us here. I have with me Desri Guthrie, who is one of our two apprentices. Jordan Gray is the other one that we selected. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here this morning. He is a sophomore in college at Potomac State University, and he has courses on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. So as much as he wanted to be here, he wasn't able to make it. So I wanted to give you guys an update, the commissioners, an update on several things. Wanted to talk to you a little bit about the process that we went through to select the apprentices, introduce the apprentices, talk about the four AI agents that we've decided to work on, and the meetings that we've had with the county officials to, to develop those, give you a status on where we are, and talk about the path forward. So first off, again, thank you very much for supporting this initiative. As you guys, as you gentlemen recall, we came to you a couple of months ago asking for a mini grant to support apprenticeships to develop AI solutions for the county. Our company out of Cape and Bridge is, is funding the majority of the costs, the cost for my time, for the instructor AI agent developer, Maria Cuellar, who also is an educator, who's also working with the apprentices and I, and, you know, overhead costs to have the program going. And you all are funding the apprentices' time. In return for that, we are developing AI agents for the county. So the process that we went through was first, we, we advertised that we were offering these AI apprenticeships. They're AI solutions development apprentices. So we posted on Facebook, we placed flyers around the county. We, I talked personally with several people in the county, including the high school teacher who, who leads all the computer development courses. And we had about, I think it was about twelve or thirteen requests for applications, which was a decent turnout, considering that we only had about two weeks to advertise and go through the process to get apprenticeship interest. From there, I did first round interviews with the apprentices. We asked them, as part of the process, I gave them a mini assignment, which included doing just a tiny bit of reading, watching a video, and producing one slide to present their findings out of that mini assignment. The ones who moved forward, and some did self-select out, the ones who moved forward, we went to a second round interview where they interviewed with Maria Cuellar and I, where they presented what they found, what they had come up with, which had to do with prompt engineering with the AIs. And then we also did interviews of the references that they provided. So I spent twenty to thirty minutes on the phone with each of their references to get a deep background on the way that they approach problems in this world, working with computers. If any of you have worked much with computers, you may know it can be very tedious and it can get very frustrating. And so part of the process was just to make sure that the apprentices who were applying had proven and that there were references who could attest to their approach to be able to work through hard problems and be patient and persistent and maintain their cool as they did that. So I'm, I'm pleased to say that we had several strong candidates that came through that process. And we selected Jordan Gray, again, who wasn't able to be here this morning, and Desri Guthrie. Jordan Gray's background, he is a Hampshire County resident, has lived and grown up in Augusta, West Virginia. He was a star soccer player at the high school, very, you know, showed a lot of discipline in that. His references were just glowing about his ability to work through hard things. He started as a sophomore in high school, working on the yearbook, worked up to run the whole yearbook process the senior year, led his peers. He went on to choose to study business and technology at Potomac State, living at home and, and commuting to Kaiser to go to his classes. And then he also works part-time as a server down at Main Street Grill, and he is one of our apprentices. And then we have Desri Guthrie, who I'm also pleased to, to introduce as one of our apprentices. Desri is a career changer. She had already made the decision that she was going to change careers before this apprenticeship came up. She worked for seven years at Pathways in administration, and her references also very glowing, said that the place would have fallen apart without her, and that she really took the charge in migrating to electronic health records for Pathways, which was a bit of a challenge with, you know, the population of people and the lack of information and that type of thing. So we're very pleased to have them both. So the process that we're going through, just as, as a reminder, we have committed to, and the apprentices have committed to, a twelve-week apprenticeship, September through December, with an optional spring extension of that apprenticeship, January through March. And both apprentices, we did a check-in about a week or so ago, both apprentices have indicated that they're very interested in moving forward and doing the second half of the apprenticeship. So we'll, we'll make a final decision on that at the, you know, end of this apprenticeship. But I think that everybody's getting enough value out of it that we want to continue to move forward, so I think that's good news. We are now, last week, on Friday, we finished week six, which means we're halfway through the apprenticeship. The apprentices are, they're being funded at ten hours a week, which is not a lot of time for all of what they're going through, but they're making just tremendous process, progress, and I'm, I'm very pleased with what they have achieved so far. So they have both gone through a goal-setting process. They selected AI agents from the list of about sixty or so that I provided to the commission that they had personal interest in working on. They explored five each and went through a process to determine which two were most viable. We sat down with county officials for each of those four, four separate meetings, the apprentices participated. They presented what it was that we would like to develop or are working on developing and got feedback from the county officials. So those four, and I'll, I'll talk about the first two and ask Des to talk about the two that she's working on. So Jordan Gray selected two different AI agents. One was the, a booking bot, if you will, that is for all businesses in Hampshire County that we will provide at no cost to them through the Chamber of Commerce. And we sat down with Jackie Graybill, the executive director of the newly, you know, reconstituted Chamber of Commerce. And that AI set of software agent will be something that can be placed as a button on any business's website that will allow people to interact, schedule, look for resources, alternatives for when they want to book something, and then take them through the process to book the activity on that website. It, it's, it becomes even more critical once Des talks about something that she's doing with tourism. But it is kind of, if you have ever seen on computers, something called calendar leaf, where you can automatically book a time on somebody's calendar, and it helps you to do that, so there's not only email back and forth, it's very similar to that. But will be available as a button that we will allow as software that the businesses can load, and we'll make it very clear how they can do that. The second one, he was very interested in EMS. And the first concept that we had for an EMS AI agent was a very good one. In fact, it was so good, the EMS team has already purchased a very similar software and said that that was something that we already had in place, which would have been an alert system for the residents of the county. We sat down with Darren Hamrick and asked him if he had thoughts on something different that would be helpful, and he had a very specific idea. And so we are instead going down the path of a voice search of EMS protocol for the frontline EMS workers. So there already is, in the state of West Virginia, for people in the public who aren't aware, a very standard protocol that are documented, a very long, detailed document. When you arrive on scene, if this, then that, if this is going on, here's the level of medication that is required to be administered to the patient, et cetera. That is a written document that people have to go either online to, which sometimes communications to that website can be challenging, or it can be looked at on a phone if the EMS worker has it loaded on their phone. What we're going to build for them is going to be a voice activation so that the EMS workers on the way to the site or at the site can do a voice search for the part of the protocol that they need to go to. So it should speed up the time that they immediately get to the part of the protocol that they need to go to. So that one's very exciting because from a technology standpoint, not only is it a voice instead of just pure typing in, but also it will remain on the phone at the edge, called the edge computing for those EMS workers. So it won't matter if they can get internet service or not, they can get to that, you know, the workflows and the protocols. So that's the second one. Des, Desri, would you like to talk about the two that you're working on?
Sure. I chose two as well. I've been, well, we met with Eric Straight to figure out what the needs for the county were. We chose a local resource matching agent. That's the first one. What it will basically do is allow residents to ask questions that they normally would call or Google search a bunch of offices to figure out either where they need to go or where they're going to get the resource that they need. It'll allow them to filter through criteria or refine their searches to redirect them to the appropriate place that they need to go to, which will save staff and county officials time. It also will have an option to, you know, if they're going to pay their taxes, what do I need to bring with me? It will tell them what they need to bring with them. The second one that goes, well, will may go into Jordan's booking bot, is the Tourism itinerary recommender. We met with Tina Ladd for this. It will allow you to put in dates of, you know, when someone, a tourist is coming to Hampshire County and make recommendations based off of local sites that we already have first, to give them recommendations, to increase their stay, better plan, which will help local businesses and those that are offering stays here in the county.
Thank you. You're welcome. So those are the four that we're exploring. Should we continue into the spring, which looks highly likely at this point, we can expand on those, should provide additional functionality to them. And in every single one of the meetings that we've had with the county officials, other ideas have come up. If we don't expand those, we will do five brand-new agents, or maybe some combination of the two. So that's, that's the plan. I do also want to note that in the apprenticeship, Desri and Jordan are becoming both business analysts and AI developers. They're not going deep, deep into the technology, but they are learning Python programming. In fact, this week and next week is all about Python programming, which is kind of the basis for all of these AI agents. They have already developed workflows for each of their AI agents. They have developed case studies that they're, they're flushing out to document how much time do these things take now, how much will they take after the AI agents are implemented so that we can see what the return on investment is. They'll also have a plan for how do we deploy and get the word out, and they are also working on what kinds of materials can we provide to get the word out to, to residents that these things exist and think about how we do that. They have developed workflows, which we sat down with each of the county officials to run through and get their feedback, make sure that what we thought workflows were, were correct, or make modifications to them. They have developed what we call UML diagrams, which is universal modeling language. That's kind of like a, a diagram for what goes in and out and what happens inside the AI agent. They have developed pseudo-code, which is kind of like a English language of what the code looks like. And they have used the AI tools already to develop drafts of each of the agents, so they actually have Python code already. Now, as, as we've talked about, as a team, that only gets us about ten percent of the way there. The other ninety percent is where does it go, how do we place it, what cybersecurity do we put in place, how do we make sure that these are human-centered AIs and are not going to behave, what are the other controls, what kind of reporting do we want, all those kinds of things. So we'll be working through all the rest of that in this next six weeks. So with that, I just, again, want to thank you for the opportunity for us to work on this apprenticeship. Again, our, our hope is that this could expand at some point in the future if the, particularly if the Trump administration puts out some grants for additional apprenticeships through the Department of Labor, we may pursue those. And we're also looking at other grants. Partic, in, in, in focus for us is one out of the Next Ladders Grant, Next Ladders Grant Venture, I haven't said the, the words right, but there's a private set of grants for using AI to ensure upward mobility in underserved communities, and we've got our eyes on that, nothing new on that yet, but that should come out in the springtime. And we hope to be able to serve the county, to, to grow, help our local businesses, help our region. And ideally, in our vision, we become a center, a hub for AI support for the region beyond just Hampshire County. So with that, thank you again. Please, if you have any questions, we would be more than happy to take them.
Okay. Thank you, ladies, for coming in and giving us the detailed update. Gentlemen, I'll open the floor for any comments or questions you have at this time.
I've got a few.
Go ahead.
So first, general comment, wonderful job on rolling this thing out and your selection and your selection process, and it seems as though you've identified strong candidates. I think that a way that we can also see value for this as a community is not just looking at the tools that we're going to get out at the end of it or the program itself, but an investment in leadership. So take it and then care about your community and go do awesome things. Questions about the program specifically, mainly, I just wanted to kind of make a request, it sounds like you're already leaning in that direction, is bear in mind, and I know that, like I said, you are, kind of the, the, the technical aspect of implementation for the end users on the county side, right? So just have that in mind. It's probably going to have some things to work out. We're modernizing everything in the IT slash website world, so just bear in mind that we're probably going to need a little bit of help as you, like, you know, look at, hey, where is this going to fit within, you know, the, the public office that's going to use it? Just have that, and I know, I know you already are. What, what do you anticipate programming look like for your continuation? Because I think we only funded through the spring program right now. What, what do you forecast out as your continuation? And then do you anticipate coming back to us with another request for support? How, how do you imagine this, just so that we can process the information with as much lead time as possible?
So ideally, if we go to expand the apprenticeships, we'll be able to get some kind of federal, state, or private grant funding, and we won't need the commission to fund going forward. We just don't know what those grants look like yet. There is no good public information other than announcements that there are going to be grants. So at this point, what we anticipate, we'd like to expand and go to as many as eight apprentices in the next cohort. The Federal Department of Labor grants require 2,000 to 4,000 hours, which is basically a full-time person. I don't know if they're going to stay to that. You know, we would love if we had full time for the apprentices, for them to go deeper into the concepts. And they're they're, you know, learning some things on their own. As I mentioned, Jordan's already in in college, learning some additional things. But the short answer is, we don't know yet, but ideally, toward the end of the apprenticeship, when we come back, we'll have more information about what those are.
Sounds great. And then has there been any, I don't remember where you guys sat in the process of receiving kind of acknowledgement and certification, linking up with Eastern and other education institutions that are within the state? Have there been any additional conversations or development in that room?
Yeah, actually, a couple of things. I met with Dr. Striplin out at Eastern West Virginia Communities and Technical College last week. They're lagging a little bit on their development of their AI micro-certification program. I offered to help them in any way that we could with the kinds of things that'll be useful to businesses in the education. So for example, the Trump administration description of an AI solution development apprentice, in my mind, left out two very important things, because they were assuming AI solution development apprentices that are working inside a big company. So we added to our curriculum cybersecurity and human-centered AI design, which is a very large passion of ours, where we're very much about things needing to be human-centered and put humans front and center, allow the AI to support what humans are doing as opposed to replacing people. So we had that conversation. We're going to continue the conversation about how how things evolve for them to get their program in place. The other thing, and certainly would be open to any of the commissioners, if you have contacts that could help us in this direction, but we have also decided as a company to build into our AI adoption model, a neuroscience-based coaching for humans working with AI. And so I've reached out a couple of different directions to WVU and have not been able to find a good contact there at the Rockefeller Neuroscience Institute yet. Reached out through Rotary, a couple of the members of Rotary, I'm a member of Rotary, put me in touch and left messages, haven't heard back. I have talked with Keith McIntosh, and he invited me to a WVU STEM reception that's going on later this week in Shepherdstown, where I'll get to meet him in person and talk to him and hopefully make another contact at WVU. But WVU is a huge place. I did, of course, start out just with direct emails there and unfortunately have not heard back yet. But academia doesn't work at the pace of business, so sometimes it takes a little bit longer. The idea is that we'd like to have them involved as we go forward into the apprenticeship so that there can be some applied science and learning from what we're doing. We want to do executive coaching for the executives who are deciding how to use AI, about how to best use the human brain versus AI. And we also want to do coaching for people who are using AI, not in this particular instance, because we're not putting AI out there for the the public necessarily, but for companies who might be using AI, so that people continue to use their critical thought process and don't let their brain degrade. There have been a couple of studies out of MIT where there has been an issue, people use AI and their brains go mushy, and we don't want that to happen, because still, the human brain is the most phenomenal of technology that exists in the world today. AI is just trying to replicate it. So we want to keep it in the in the right perspective as we go forward. So I think that may have answered your question. We're we're trying to get in touch with WVU. We are working with the Community College.
Keep us posted as those as those relationships develop as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, no real questions, just just want to say thank you for the work that you're doing. You got two very good apprentices here, so I'm excited to see them continue to grow and to learn, and very much appreciate your collaboration with the county and then how we can utilize this tool to help us in the future. And as Commissioner Mance said, you know, these two individuals, looking forward to seeing how they can continue to grow and become leaders in the county. So it's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for us?
No, ma'am. I think you've covered it very well.
All right. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for suas ponte, coming back whenever you said you would. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have a probate in solemn form, and we have Mr. Kevin Judy here today from the Mellon estate. Come on up, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So it's my understanding that Ms. Schaefer is here today, and so how would you all like her to be seated? Do you want her next to me?
I'll leave that up to you, however you want to do that.
I think you should.
Yeah, I mean, just, I think that makes sense.
Do you have the new certifications of service?
I have printed them out. All right, Mr. Judy, you have the floor.
Okay, so this is a, good morning, Commissioners. This is a continuation of our meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. Essentially, my argument remains the same. I think that this will should be probated because my understanding is that it wasn't revoked by Ms. Mellon. And so actually, I'd kind of just like to cede the floor to Ms. Schaefer to say why she thinks the will shouldn't be probated, and then, do you have an issue?
The only thing that I'd request, President Englinger, is if we're going to take statements from individuals, this is a quasi-hearing, I'd actually prefer that we swear anybody in that wishes to testify, other than Mr. Judy.
No complaints with that from me.
I'm okay with that. Clerk, are we?
I don't have an oath prepared.
You just, if you if you are prepared to testify, ma'am, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
In all matters presented before this hearing today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, as as I was saying, I'm, I'd just like to cede the floor to see what she wants to raise, and then maybe I can rebut that. She can go back at me, and then we can, we can see if we can hash this out. And then the mic's sort of pointed in my direction, I don't know how loud you are, whatever. If you'd like the mic to be more your way.
Needs to be.
Yeah, just just in case, because I I tend to find myself yelling a lot, so I think that, well, not today, but, you know.
All right, so in 2018, not even two months after my grandmother's husband passed, is when this will went in to, she went to the lawyer with Junior and had the will put in. In July of 2019, I was at my grandmother's house. I was picking her up. She was coming to stay with me for a week. We did that. She went back home, and she was like, hey, can you do me a favor? And I was like, what? She goes, go in my bedroom, she said, and try and get into the lockbox, because we asked Junior when he was there if he could get the key from the lockbox to the lockbox so she can open it up. And he said he didn't have it with him. He, it was at his house. He was staying at with his girlfriend at the time. He never came back with it. Mammy said, can you open it? So Mammy, I, and Luella, we all sat there, and we got it open, and the will wasn't in there. And then she said, can you go look under my bed? I looked under her bed, and that's where we found the will. We were sitting there, and she goes, read it to me what it says. So I read her the whole entire will. With it was a power of attorney for medical and a power of attorney for financial. And my grandmother was like, Sherry, that's not what it was supposed to say. And I was like, well, Mammy, you can go back to the lawyer and tell him this wasn't what it's supposed to say. Mammy felt that the lawyer was Junior's friend. That's why she didn't want to go back to that lawyer. She snatched the papers out of my hand, and she went out on the porch, and she said, come on, and she burned those papers in front of me. And that was on July 17th, 2019. She asked me, I was like, Mammy, now you don't have a will, what are you going to do? I said, you don't have your power of attorneys, nothing like that. I was like, what are you going to do? She asked me to draw up the power of attorney and the the financial and medical power of attorneys, and we went the very next day, I printed them out at the library, we went the very next day, and we had them notarized, the medical and the financial power of attorneys. I have a letter also from my, from her niece, my Aunt Patsy, and it's sort of, it's notarized, that she told us that she had the will taken care of. She went back to a lawyer. She had it taken care of to where Junior had lifetime rights. Nobody could make him leave. And after he passed away, it got passed down into the family, went to me, then it went to the kids, and then so on. It was to never be sold. And she did it that way, so it stayed in our family, because her and Pop Pop worked so hard for it. The only reason that I'm raising issues, because according to everybody else, Mammy had another will drawn up that stated that. And now nobody could find that will either, and then this one's being administered in. The other thing is, in the petition that was sent to me, it said in set, or in summer of 2023, he believes I went in and I picked the lock and did all that and and took the will. But then they also said in winter of 2023, she had the will with her when she went to go see the lawyer, Mr., I can't even remember his name.
Attorney Will Keaton?
Yes, Mr. Keaton. So there's like a lot of things in here that didn't make sense to me. But in 2019, my grandmother burned that will, because she didn't want, she, my uncle was with a girl at the time that my grandmother very much didn't like, and she was scared that he was going to marry this girl, and she would be able to get her property, and that's not what she wanted. She wanted to keep our property in the family, since we've all, that was always our comfort place. That's where we always went. The whole family would meet there. And then I have the letter from my, well, it's her niece, I call her Aunt Patsy. If you guys want to see that.
Can you submit your documents there that you brought with you to the?
The?
The Commissioners, please, yes.
Who do I give it to?
Just, I'll let the other Commissioners look at them as well.
And then, sorry, are you done with your testimony?
Yeah, pretty much.
I just wanted to know about that letter from Aunt Patsy. Was she, Aunt Patsy's the one that claims that another will was drafted?
Yeah, in 2013, or in 2023, another will was drafted to keep the property in the family.
In 2023, it was drafted?
Yep.
Okay, so does the, does that letter discuss why there would be a four-year gap in between another will being drafted? Does that letter discuss why Aunt Patsy was the one that only had knowledge of the will being drafted? And you wouldn't have been there, for example?
According to Aunt Patsy, the will, Junior would have been the one to take her to get the will done.
He would have?
And Junior knew about, because Aunt Patsy told him that he knew about it.
I guess I'm I'm wondering about this this new will. So let let me just go through some of the facts as I see it. The will was drafted in 2018, and it cut out two of Ms. Mellon's three kids. In 2019, it's claimed that she burned the will because it didn't do what she wanted. I believe the testimony is that it should have gone to life estate to Lloyd, then fully to Sherry after Lloyd's death. However, if a four-year gap in between 2019 to 2023 would have allowed ample chance for Mellon to pass away and to have her estate go to all three kids and have Sherry not recovered regardless. So to have a four-year gap in between the creation of another will seems odd. It also seems odd that my client wouldn't recall taking his mother to get another will drafted. And then in the exact same year that she claims that occurred, my client did take his mother to Will Keaton to get the will to remove Sherry entirely. And that is Will Keaton's testimony, that Sherry was going to be removed as a contingent beneficiary, contingent executor. Will Keaton saw the will that he drafted in 2023. I don't believe my petition did say that my client couldn't find the will in in 2023. I think it was that he removed it from underneath the mattress and put it in the lockbox in 2023, and sometime in 2024 was when we've alleged that you picked the lock. Let's see. Also, Sherry was present directly after Ms. Mellon died, and she just sat there, apparently, and let the entire family search for a will when she knew that it had been burned in 2019. They searched for hours. She didn't mention at any point that day, at at all, that the will had already been burned, and so the search was not going to result in anything. Perhaps her testimony to that point would be, well, I knew that there was another will that was drafted, and so therefore I was hoping that they would find that one.
Do you have anybody in the room that can testify to that point?
That the that the family was searching for the will and Sherry was present?
Yes.
Everybody in the audience? Lloyd, Missy?
Call somebody that is willing to be sworn in.
Sure. Okay. All right. So if you all would both want to come up, then Lloyd, I'm assuming you were there as well. Yes, all three of you, come on up and say that.
But, I mean, unless you, gentlemen, I really just need to hear one person from on the record. I'm okay taking, personally, I'm okay taking, since, let's hearsay evidence, right? I'm okay hearing it from your position with regards to Will Keaton's testimony. Will Keaton has an obligation through his legal profession, as do you. If somebody's in the room that can testify to a fact, I'd rather actually have that fact be part of our record.
Totally understand, Commissioner. So if you'd like to state your name for the record, and if you would like to, so you need to see how loud you are.
Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record?
Danielle Height.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth in all matters presented today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, and then?
Sure. So my question to you would be, were you present whenever the family was searching for the will?
Yes, sir. I searched the house. I tore trash bags apart that they shredded the papers. I tried to piece the papers together, but it, no luck there. I destroyed the closet. And say, we searched.
And was Sherry present for this?
No.
Sherry wasn't there that day?
She was not there the day that we searched. She was there the day that Granny had passed away, but done, done anything.
Oh, okay. All right.
There was nothing, the day that Granny passed away, that, you know, Lloyd was the mess.
Okay, my understanding was that, that the family was present, or that she was present when people were searching for the will.
No, it was me, my stepdaughter.
Yeah, well, for the day that they were there, we were cleaning filing cabinets out and everything else, and part of it, we were in parts looking for it. And Sherry's going through saying that this wasn't no good, that wasn't, but at that time, yeah, we were looking for it.
No, but, so was Sherry present when the family was looking for the will? That's what I'm trying to have you ask. Understood, so then I was mistaken. You can have a seat. I'll just keep going. So, in any event, my concern here is that this letter from Aunt Patsy that I haven't gotten a chance to read, it seems like Sherry's saying that she didn't have knowledge of the second will being drafted, but this Aunt Patsy did. That somehow Aunt Patsy is swearing that Lloyd went to go get the will drafted. Well, so as an issue of hearsay here, how is it that Aunt Patsy would have personal knowledge that Lloyd went and had a will drafted? Why is it that Lloyd would not remember this? Why would he care? I mean, the thing is, it's, in any event, I've got some other issues on credibility. In the emails that I provided to you all, where she sent the paragraphs to me that I presented at the last hearing, she claims that she had given the family money, for example. She claims that she gave $1,200 to the family on July 3rd. That didn't occur. She claims that she gave $200 to Lloyd to get food for the house on June 14th. That didn't occur, and my witnesses in the audience can vouch for that. And so, actually, all right, well, then both of you all come up for that. And also, she claims that she could only take out $250 per day. It actually is about 300, according to the bank statements I've seen. And so that's just more notches against the credibility here. But but really, my, well, I'll let you all speak. So introduce yourselves to the court. You're the commission.
No, Caitlin Sutherland.
Ma'am, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth in all matters presented today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Caitlin, were you at the house on July 3rd, 2025?
Yes, sir.
At any point, did Sherry give Lloyd money?
No, sir.
Were you present at the house on June 14th?
Nope, I wasn't out there that day.
Was that your sister?
Yes.
Okay, so you, were you present on the house on June 14th?
Yes.
Did Sherry give the family any money at all?
No.
Okay, that's all I need from you all. Thanks. Was that your sister?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, you, were you present on the house on June 14th?
Yes.
Did Sherry give the family any money at all?
No.
Okay, that's all I need from you all, thanks. Essentially, I just, when we go through the factors here of a four-year gap has been claimed before she would have drafted another will, and that would have allowed this ample time for her to pass away and her other children that she excommunicated with and cut out of the 2018 will to recover. I don't see how that would have ever occurred. She didn't write that in the email to me, uh, whenever she explained why this couldn't be the case. And so I don't know if she just didn't know about that, and then now she's saying that she talked to Aunt Patsy and Aunt Patsy said, oh, yeah, well, that couldn't have happened because there was another will conveniently in 2023. That wasn't in her email to me a few weeks ago, so it's news to me. None, none of, my client has never heard this story before. And under in-state, uh, intestate succession, Sherry would recover nothing. Under the 2018 will, Sherry would recover nothing. And so I just don't see why Sherry would have allowed, if, if she had knowledge about it, why would she have allowed the mother, Ms. Mellon, to have gone four years without this other will? And then finally, again, Will Keaton saw this will in 2023, December, and the whole purpose of that meeting was to get Sherry off of the will. And he told them, save your money, she's only a contingent beneficiary and a contingent executor. You don't need to cut her off. That's, and, and so I just think, if Will Keaton saw the will, then it couldn't have been burned in 2019. And also, again, contextually, why would there have been a four-year gap after the burning? Versus when the will that Sherry claims that would have given her everything she wanted would have been drafted? That wouldn't have made sense. Sherry would have been up her grandmother's butt trying to say, okay, come on, Grandma, let's do it. But she claims that Lloyd brought her to the, to the lawyer. And so I just, I just don't understand. And so I'll cede the floor and, and, uh, take rebuttal.
So with the fact of not have, my grandma not having a will for four years, my grandma was a very stubborn woman. I told her nonstop, Mammy, when you're going to do your will? You need to do it, you burned it, when are we doing it? There's been plenty of times I came up during the week and I'd be like, Mammy, you want to go? No, I don't feel good, I don't feel like going. I'm like, Mammy, come on, we got to get this done. My grandmother did have a lot of health problems too, on top of that. Trying to remember some other stuff Caitlyn was just in here saying, um. Oh, as far as the money thing, I have pictures I submitted with the email of where he's sending me pictures when he asks for the lawnmower. He sent me pictures of the lawnmower, be it with a full tank of gas and running. Like, he sent me saying, oh, I'm going to go take care of the electric bill on Monday. Why would you tell me all those things if I didn't help you in some sort of way? Or why are you sending me all these things if I didn't help you in some sort of way? So Junior and I had a good relationship up until, like, literally up until this. When the will came up and everybody's looking for the will and stuff like that, when I went there, we were going through my grandmother's, this is before my grandmother even passed. My grandmother was still there, I was taking care of her. I did her whole entire hospice care while she was there. I was off work for two weeks doing her hospice care. She was in the hospital and she came home for the week. And she passed within the week. I was looking, we were emptying out filing cabinets and stuff like that. I was looking to see if she did make a new will that I didn't know about. Mammy never told me she made a new will. I kept getting on her. And my other point is if there was such a problem and he had, like, the whole will and everything figured out, why was there never an issue when Mammy and I went and got these, and then when I had to invoke it? Like, she was in the hospital in 2021 on life support. I had to fly in from Baltimore to Morgantown. I'm doing everything with the medical power of attorney. Why, why, if he had it, why didn't he go and invoke his medical power of attorney? When everything was going on, why didn't he invoke the financial power of attorney?
He didn't have one?
He did, with the original will. He had the financial power of attorney and medical power of attorney, because that's what made my grandmother really upset because she said it wasn't supposed to be like that.
No, it's what it was. Mom told me, she said that that she sent Sherry as a nurse and all this and that, that her take care of this. And then she said that way the burden is not on you. And she said, uh, she said, when I pass, I know you're going to be doing good. I said, okay, Mom, I said, if that's what you want, so that's what I did.
Okay, so, uh, your testimony is that your grandmother didn't tell you that she drafted a new will in 2023?
No, we found it, I found it through Aunt Patsy.
Did Aunt Patsy conveniently forget the name of the law firm she went to in that letter?
She said she went to the same lawyer.
I thought your prior testimony was that she didn't want to go to Will Keaton?
She didn't want to go to Will Keaton, but Junior said, she said Junior took her to the same lawyer.
Well, that makes this really easy, actually, because Will Keaton, that didn't happen. I mean, I've already talked to Will Keaton, there was no other appointment. He saw the will from 2018 and 2023. And so if her claim is that Will Keaton drafted this other will, there's no way.
I don't know who drafted it.
Mr. Judy, I'm going to take a few minutes here for the, uh, commissioners to review the, uh, newer documents we have here.
Okay.
That will just take us a few minutes, but, uh, I want each commissioner to be able to, these are new documents, I believe, uh, for us to review. So we're going to take that time now.
Sure.
As you're, uh, referring to these documents as we speak, so I want everybody to be able to review them.
I'm getting ready to ask you for a detailed timeline and precise statements, recalling your conversations with Mr. Keaton, if you can get those kind of laid out.
Sure.
I want that. And also, uh, terms under which the 2018 differed from the one that it replaced, the 2018 will, the original, the will that's being presented here.
So I'm not sure what, how it would have differed from the, the will she's claiming was drafted in 2023 because I, I don't think it existed.
That when the 2018 will was drafted, you said it actually disinherited, uh, two of her children?
Yes.
Just have that pretty well ready to lay out for me, if you don't know. This is a, just a medical power of attorney. This is a form document that pretty much just says that she's allowed to make medical decisions, decisions related to her care. Did you get a chance to review that letter?
No. Um, but honestly, it's, it's all hearsay anyway because she's claiming to know about a meeting that she wasn't present at. And I don't know what else use it could be. I mean, if, if it does say in there that she actually took him to Will Keaton, that'd be amazing. Because, well, anyway.
It does not.
It does not. And like I said, the, the mention of hearsay is just to kind of allow us to process and weight the information as we see fit. And I don't think there's any rules on these hearings which would actually prohibit us from considering hearsay evidence, which you wouldn't be able to admit in circuit court. But, you know, I think pragmatically, it's, it's, it's.
Oh, yeah, I have no issue with you all reviewing that at all. Yeah, just let me know whenever, um, you'd like to question me about, uh, my discussion with Will Keaton, also the original will, or will, the 2018 will.
I would probably like President Englinger to just, uh, at least be able to summarize the contents of that letter. Uh, it's a statement, it's a certified statement from, uh, somebody who's not here today. Notarized statement is what it looks like.
Okay, basically, the letter, uh, submitted by Sherry here is, uh, dated September 29th, 2025. And it's from, uh, Patsy Dodson, uh, niece to Elizabeth Mellon. I will summarize, as I won't read the whole letter, but, uh, she writes, uh, claiming that she just wants, uh, wishes, uh, of her aunt to be honored. That she did have a very close relationship, uh, there as she talked several times a week. She claims that, uh, Mrs. Mellon told her that, uh, Junior gets life rights, and when something happens to him, then it goes to, uh, Sherry Schaefer and her kids to keep in the family. She says after Aunt Elizabeth passed, uh, Junior called her and, uh, asked her to tell him exactly, uh, about the will. And, uh, she said that she would be honest, but that he wouldn't like it. And she restated what I already stated, that the, uh, lifetime rights and then go to, uh, Sherry and her kids. She, she also stated that Sherry Schaefer was the power of attorney and medical, uh, power of attorney. And that's, that hits all the, uh, main topics of the letter.
So does that letter state who took Ms. Mellon in 2023 to get the will done?
It does not.
It does not.
Susan, my question then for Sherry is, where did the information come from that the 2023 will was drafted by Will Keaton? Who said that Lloyd took her to that appointment?
My Aunt Patsy's the one who told me on the phone. I asked, I thought I put everything in the letter, I don't know.
Okay, so Patsy told you that Will Keaton wrote that the 2023 will, and she told you that Lloyd was the one that brought her to that appointment?
She said he took her, from what she knew, he took her to the lawyer in 2023 and the whole will was rewritten. And that's, that's what it was supposed to have said.
It's all right. This letter, unless I'm missing something from the handwriting, does not actually state that the will was previously burned, or the previous version of the letter was burned. It states that, uh, the, um, the decedent had informed this aunt that also she told me she had changed the will in 2023 sometime another. That's the only statement that would indicate a revocation. So what I'm trying to compile here is, uh, evidence of an actual revocation, which would make us unable to admit this will is presented in solemn form. The only evidence that I see in this letter that pertains to that at all is that statement that was just written because there was no statement indicating that it was burned.
Okay, so, um, just a quick point about it. Why wouldn't, why would Lloyd have had to have called this Aunt Patsy if he was present at the meeting in 2023 about what the will said? Presumably, he would have had personal knowledge about what went on at that meeting in 2023. He wouldn't have had to have called the aunt. I, I also, you know, when, if that letter actually says that the will was changed in 2023 and Ms. Mellon told her that, well, that makes a lot of sense because Ms. Mellon went to Will Keaton to change the will in 2023. It just didn't end up happening because Will Keaton told her to save her money. And so I can get into that if you'd like about my.
I would, I would first like you to just give us a, just so that we have our, kind of our, the facts laid out in front of us uh, as we get ready to deliberate. Can you give me a summary of the way that that 2018 will differed from the one that was, that it replaced when it was created? Or the disinheritance?
There is no, uh.
So there was no previous will?
No, my understanding is that this is the one and only. And it was drafted in 2018 and it cut out, uh, the two children, Dreama and Philip. And then it left everything to Lloyd, but if Lloyd were to die before Sherry and the mother's still alive, Ms. Mellon, then Sherry inherits. Uh, and also Sherry is the executor, the successor executor if Lloyd were to have passed away. And so my conversations with Will Keaton, in early July, I reached out to Will Keaton and asked him to provide us a copy of the will because otherwise I did, I didn't know what it said and I didn't know how I'm supposed to probate nothing. And so I called him, he said, yeah, I can give you a copy. He sent that along to me. Then in late July, uh, after I had a meeting with my client and they told me that, well, we went and saw Will Keaton in 2023, I called Will Keaton and asked him to confirm. And I said, all right, Will, what happened? Did you meet with Ms. Mellon and Lloyd to change the will in, uh, in around 2024, 2023? And he said it was December 2023. He said that Lloyd and Ms. Mellon showed up because they wanted Sherry removed from the will. Will Keaton told them, look, you don't need to bother with that because Sherry doesn't recover under the will as it's written anyway. Why don't you just save your hundred or two dollars? He didn't phrase it like that, he said, why don't you save your money so that that way, you know, you don't have to bother? It's, it's, as is, it's perfect. As long as Lloyd doesn't die, who cares? And so that's basically the conversation I had with Will Keaton. I asked Will Keaton if he'd come here to testify. He said, uh, I'll come to a court if you subpoena me. He said, but otherwise I'd rather stay out of it. I said, fair enough, if we go to court, I'll subpoena you. He said, that's fine, he'd be happy to do so. And so, um, that's the extent of my conversations with Will Keaton. But if, if the, if the verbal testimony from Sherry is that Patsy told her that the 2023 new will was done by Will Keaton, he would have given me that when I asked for a copy of the last will and testament. But he gave me this 2018 version. I asked him if this was the last one, he said, yeah. And so to me, I just, i- i- if that is the testimony that Will Keaton was the one that wrote the other will, that could not have happened. Uh, and again, if the testimony is that my client called this Aunt Patsy to ask her about the will, why would that have happened if he was the one that drove her to the meeting? And, and so I just, I don't know. To me, the fact that Will Keaton saw this will at the end of 2023 and that they were showing up to change it, to remove Sherry from it at that point, I, I don't really, uh, well, I, I rest. I don't think there's anything that needs to be discussed.
Can I say something? Sorry.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Judy. Anything else, ma'am?
Yes. Um, so with the showing up to Will Keaton to have me taken off. Um, so with the showing up to Will Keaton to have me taken off the will, if they would have read the will, they would have seen I wasn't, I wasn't even on the will. And like I said, unless something happened to Junior before Mammy, my grandmother would have never. I took care of my grandmother. I did everything for my grandmother, which is why she wanted that will gone and had it. She was supposed to have it set up to where it stayed in the family. I don't want Junior to have to leave my grandmother's house or anything like that. That's not what I'm after. What I'm after is the conversation that Junior and I had when him and I were by myself, we were getting water, because they go down to the spring and get water. The conversation we had was, he said, he's going to have it set up to where his current wife and her kids can have my grandmother's house if something happens to him. And I was like, well, Junior, that's not what Mammy's will said. Mammy's will said it goes to the, it goes down the family, like it stays in the family. And never once did he rebut anything that, when we were having that conversation, that that's not how it was supposed to go.
Just to be clear, the will doesn't say anything about, it doesn't even use the word family. I mean, it it just says it all goes to Lloyd.
Which is the one that got burned in twenty nineteen. And that's why she said she burned it, because it didn't say what she said it was supposed to say.
I think you all have enough.
President Englinger, I'm prepared to kind of lay it out so that we can deliberate if that's all right with you for a way forward here.
Sure, go ahead.
So the reason why that this process exists is because, uh, public policy, we have a preference for people being able to choose what happens without their, you know, at the end of their lives. Uh, we prefer as, uh, as public policy, uh, for someone to pass test date, i.e., with their will controlling versus intestacy. So whenever a will is not available, uh, this law exists to allow, you know, us to be able to admit something which otherwise doesn't check all of the boxes. Uh, what we've been presented with is something that was created and verified, uh, by a trusted attorney here in town in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, and then what we have as our obligation here today is, you know, in this capacity, is to determine whether or not that will was revoked, uh, before it's being presented today. Uh, the evidence that I can understand that we have that it was, that it was revoked was a in-person testimony, a sworn testimony by somebody who would have benefited from it being revoked, uh, that it was burned in twenty nineteen, and a letter from a family member which does not state that the previous will was burned, uh, but says that it was changed in twenty twenty three or sometime or another, uh, without any detail whatsoever. Those are the only two pieces of evidence that I actually understand that have been presented to us of an actual revocation by the deceased. You know, at all. I think that in the evidence that I understand that would be presented to counter some of that is the testimony, uh, that Mr. Judy's been provided, or that Mr. Judy has provided with his conversations with the drafting attorney, Mr. Will Keaton, which would actually make, uh, both of those two instances, uh, impossible if we consider, uh, his, uh, Mr. Keaton's, uh, testimony, not testimony, Mr. Keaton's statements as relayed by Mr. Judy to be true. Uh, it sounds as though Mr. Keaton was able to confirm that he did have a December twenty twenty three appointment in which the terms of the will were discussed, and a decision not to alter them was made. Um, that is, you know, one of the things that I think that we can appropriately consider here is that Mr. Judy has a, uh, legal and ethical obligation to present the truth to us, as does Mr. Keaton in all of his, uh, findings. And I don't think either one of them are overly inclined to risk their licenses to practice law uh, over any one given matter. So I think that that's something that we can, you know, consider, uh, whenever we can weigh, uh, those accounts as relayed to us today. I think that that's the evidence that's really before us, gentlemen. Um, like I said, was there a will created? Was it revoked? And is there any evidence which indicates that the evidence, uh, that are for revocation, uh, would be counted to that? And then we would appropriately give weight to that and then make a decision based on that. I'm happy to discuss further with you guys. I do have my position on this, but I think that that's the evidence that we need to consider.
Those are the same, uh, topics that I have noted here, Commissioner, uh, right along the lines of, of, uh, what's been presented to us and what evidence to, uh, consider, based on what's been, uh, asked of us. So I'm, I'm very much, uh, looking at, looking at this in the same manner, um, as you are, Commissioner. Um, Commissioner Brill, do you have any further?
Just one point of clarification, just wanted to, to, uh, the statement from Mr. Keaton was that the original will was presented to him in December of twenty twenty three? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. And the, really, the reason for that is because you, it's just, as a guy that drafts wills, you bring the original to the office and say, here's what I want changed, here's what I want done. And so his statement to me was, he, he has the will, and, you know, they basically go to his office in December twenty twenty three. He tells him, look, we don't need to change this clause, because she doesn't recover anyway, save your money. And that's, that's really the extent of it.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have a, uh, a wish to, uh, proceed with a, uh, a position on this at this time?
President Englinger, I, I am prepared to, to make a motion here. Um, and I think just statement of fact, or a statement as I understand, uh, what, an evaluation of the evidence that's been presented to us. I've heard evidence, you know, that the will was revoked in twenty nineteen. Uh, and I've heard evidence that that same will was contemplated, uh, by an attorney whose job it is is to essentially lay out the, the desires of the testator in December of twenty twenty three, and the decision was made to not, uh, to not alter that will. I do not see that there is sufficient evidence of a revocation, and I would move that the county commission, uh, adopt and, uh, adopt this, uh, will in solemn form as presented.
Second. Okay, I got a motion, uh, on the floor with a second, that we adopt this, uh, will in solemn form as presented. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously. Thank you all.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay. We are, uh, behind, so I will move right along. I believe we, uh, have Hampshire County Little League here. Uh, we had been contacted that there was nobody, uh, coming, but I see Mr. Cheves back there who, uh, called me yesterday. So I will offer you the floor, Mr. Cheves.
Yeah, Alex is not, uh, here, he's the speaker. You, you want to say something first?
Hey, I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Here is this, this is what we're looking at, a building like the high school has for baseball, softball, and other activities for the youth. The high school is just being overrun. The youth can't even get in it. Um, this is, uh, we're looking at about twenty K right now, eighteen K. It's about probably twenty-two, twenty-three thousand right now. We have been going out there. I think we, Alex and them are working with, uh, Romney. And I think, uh, Josh is working with John Todd. There's, we're trying to get grants and everything. And we're just looking to see if there's any funding from y'all. And if there is, um, if there's not, keep us in mind. And if there is, we'll be, uh, grateful for anything that we can get from y'all. We, we need it for the youth. We're way behind. And it, it shows. It shows in all the counties. And, um, where Hampshire used to be on top, we're behind now. Petersburg, Moorefield, you know, Kaiser and Frankfurt's had them programs a while. Petersburg and them, they're on the ball. And, uh, anything that's, you know, like I said, is grateful, we need this, so we can get our youth in and practice earlier in the winters and everything like that. And, uh, like I said, we've been trying, you know, we go up there to the high school, and, and there's so many, uh, programs now that we're fighting to get in. So we're trying to put another building in like that, dinner at the Little League on the deaf and blind. We've already got the okay there. Um, anything that we put in down at the Little League, if something happens, the deaf and blind will either donate that land to us or reimburse us with any improvements that we put on that land. So it's a win-win. This should have been done a long time ago. I know, uh, Josh Durst, he, he has, you know, like, he can get the building, we're going to put together, put it together. That's just showing what we need. We probably need more, but that's a start. Scott C. is there for the Little League, uh, football. Um, he mentioned about wanting to use it to do, uh, you know, like, uh, exercises and stuff. It's, it's for the youth. I don't think we're going to turn anybody down that needs to use it, though, and that's what we're respecting. And this is something y'all can think about, look it over. I know you are behind, and I'll ease out your old way. And Brian, if you get back with me and see what y'all decide, let me know. Um, you know, like, any donations would be great.
Well, thank you for coming in, Ronnie.
Yep.
I believe we saw, saw this on the, uh, grants we looked at Monday, uh, Commissioner Mans. You're, you were familiar, I think you helped write some of those.
I'm prepared to talk a little bit about it. First, uh, I really just want to say that even though you guys have a number right here at the top of this thermometer, that's because everybody that has already poured themselves into the project has done incredible donations in kind to get it down to that. So you got local contractors, local suppliers, local businesses that'll say, hey, I can come in and do this at cost, I can come in and do this at cost. So I think even just getting it to the point where it has that dollar sign instead of a dollar sign that's three or four times that is an amazing thing that you guys have already done for the community. So first off, thank you for your time and your work in getting this put together and getting this planned. Um, you're not going to ever hear me say anything bad about, uh, youth development infrastructure, because I think that is what's going to enable us to continue to increase programming availability for our kids. And I think that that's, uh, it's an awesome thing for us to consider. What I will say, gentlemen, is that, um, this is part of the eight grant application that just went out, which is going to have a shorter grant cycle. We should actually have an understanding by, uh, December as to what the award is, uh, on that. And it could be zero. It could be zero.
Yeah.
But I can tell you that there, there could be a good chunk of it also. Uh, so, um, my thoughts are, if, from, you know, a request standpoint before the commission is, if, you know, you guys can hold off, let's see kind of where that's going to land. Uh, and then that'll, I think, inform you guys a little bit more as to what the, what the remaining need is after that.
Yes.
So, and that's why I brought that grant up, is because I, I was thinking along the same lines, Commissioners, that, uh,
Yeah, I know that they're working on a few of them.
Would be different as to, uh, how to help out as, as we see what other grants come in. Um, and, uh, certainly, certainly as, is, if you get, get that grant and the amount that they ask for, it would certainly be, uh, uh, much easier for us to, to make it go from there, so.
So when that grant comes in, since y'all are familiar with it, do we need to come back and present ourselves again? Or will y'all just keep that in mind and go off that?
It would need to be on the agenda. If you're not able to present, then we could consider it by ourselves, but it would always be.
After we get the grants and stuff, if we get them, seeing what it is, come back and present ourselves again?
That's, I think that's a good plan.
Okay.
Being that this, again, is something we will know, uh, fairly shortly. Not next week, but in a couple of months.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brill, did you have any, uh, questions or comments for Mr. Cheves?
No, I think you guys, uh, as we were going through that and continued to ask questions, covered most of the questions, uh, that I have. I just want a real quick thing, I just wanted to make sure, I'm assuming that Hampshire County Little League would be the one, the entity that would be controlling this facility, the use of?
Yes, yes, we'll probably get, probably Scott C. involved too, since we're down there, he uses that Little League field and stuff also.
So it would be, be able to utilize by all Little League, anyone that participates in Little League within the county, softball, baseball?
Yes, softball, probably, you know, with the youth football, Scott mentioned about using the program there too, to exercise his kids if it's a bad day, you know?
Okay.
It's, it's a good thing for the youth. We, we, we definitely need it. We're, we're being blocked out of there and.
At the high school?
Yes. There's just too many teams.
Okay.
Not enough time.
All right.
Fair enough.
Hey, I appreciate your effort for the county in that respect there, Mr. Cheves, thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll see ya.
Okay. And again, we are behind, so, uh, our ten AM appointment was the Family Crisis Center requested for, uh, a proclamation in recognition of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Hello.
Good morning.
So, sorry, I'm not great at this. Um, my name's Rebecca Conrad, I'm from the Family Crisis Center. We really just want to honor and recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the county. Um, at the Crisis Center, we serve men, women, and families affected by domestic violence, sexual assault. We, we do legal advocacy, emotional support, recovery resources, housing and employment assistance, crisis intervention, support groups, and a multitude of other things. We are also active in education and prevention, helping the community learn what healthy relationships look like and how to safely support someone who is experiencing abuse. The work that we do is grounded in the West Virginia Bill of Rights, the Victims' Bill of Rights, which is state law. I'm part of the M D I T with the prosecutor and her office and the Sexual Assault Response Team. And that's how we make sure that those rights are honored, ensuring that survivors are treated with dignity, respect, and compassion. And that's also how the county is compliant with the Victims' Bill of Rights. The proclamation isn't just a formality, it's a statement that the county stands with survivors. It's an acknowledgement that domestic violence happens here too, even in small towns. And we refuse to stay silent. Stigma and shame keep people trapped, but awareness is how we break the cycle. So I have survivors here with me today, um, people who have faced challenges of abuse and are standing strong living proof that healing and hope are possible. So by signing the proclamation, we're reaffirming that our shared commitment to the county is safety, awareness, and accountability, and that we want to build Hampshire County to be a place where every person has the right to live free from violence.
Okay, thank you for that, ma'am. Um, did you have any, uh, anything else you wanted to share with us?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, uh, well.
Just the.
Your, your request is for us to adopt a proclamation, um, in regards to, uh, basically everything you just.
Right.
Said, so, and we do have that copy here. I will just read it for the public, um, since it's something the Commissioners are considering. It's a proclamation, um, in regards to Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October two thousand and twenty-five, Hampshire County, West Virginia. Whereas, domestic violence is a pervasive issue that affects individuals and families in every community, regardless of age, race, gender, or background, and causes deep and lasting harm to the health and safety of its victims. And domestic violence includes physical, emotional, psychological, sexual, and financial, financial abuse, leaving lifelong impacts on survivors, their children, and the fabric of our community. And Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to honor the strength, courage, and resilience of survivors. Remember these whose lives have been taken by violence and recommit ourselves to building a safe, more compassionate community, and serves as a vital resource for individuals and families in Hampshire County by providing confidential advocacy, safety, planning, shelter, emotional support, and community education, while working along law enforcement, health care providers, schools, and community partners to prevent violence and promote healing. And our community stands united with advocates. And our community stands united with advocates, service providers, survivors, and all who work tirelessly to endorse, to end, I'm sorry, not to endorse, to end domestic violence and promote safety, hope, and empowerment for all residents of Hampshire County. And then, of course, if we adopt this, it says now therefore I, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim October twenty, 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Hampshire County, West Virginia, and encourage all residents to join together in raising awareness, supporting survivors, and working toward a future free from violence and fear. And apologize for my choppy reading there. I should have had my glasses. So gentlemen, we have this proclamation to consider. So at this time, if you gentlemen don't have any further comments or questions for this young lady, then we would
President Engels, I promise I'll be brief on this, but I do actually have, I think, a question and then a comment. Do I understand correctly that when you talked about the West Virginia Victims' Bill of Rights, that it provides that each victim of domestic and sexual abuse is entitled to have a, a resource available to them? Somebody available to them at all times?
Yes, yes. So that's part, part of it, but yes, they're supposed to. According to the Victims' Bill of Rights, if someone is assaulted or abused, they are, their right is to have an advocate or someone of their choice with them from start to finish throughout the whole process. So from the time they report to law enforcement, if that's what they choose, all the way through to the criminal justice system, depending on how they, if they report or not.
And do I understand correctly that that is your role and your capacity here, I mean, with your office here in the county?
Yes, so in Hampshire County, I am the one and only advocate. So all the things that we talked, that I just said are that I do those. Our main office is in Kaiser, but this is Outreach Office. And so, yes, I'm the one, one person who should do that.
My, my only desire in bringing that up and then commenting on it is that I think, you know, if somebody ever has to go through that situation, if they have somebody that is available to help guide them through, connect them with resources, help ask the questions that they may not know to ask. I think it's an incredibly important thing for somebody to be able to have and also for everybody in the county to understand that if something does happen to you in the county, you will have somebody that's available for you. And that's, I think, my only comment before we, I would actually move now that we adopt the proclamation as presented, President Engels.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the proclamation of Domestic Violence Award Month, October 2025. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Clerk, you just, you want me to?
Please, if you would, I'll go and make that. I'm going to run downstairs and make copies.
Thank you. Yes, so, do I go back there?
Good, thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Thank you. Thanks. Rebecca Conrad. I've been emailing with you. So, and I'm going to send you some extra information too.
Okay, gentlemen, we will move on to the process of, to meet with other Commissioners in regards to electrical transmission line path countywide survey regarding M A R L. I think we can get started, Aaron. Did you want to come on down here? I know you had some stuff for us.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm in front of you this morning to discuss the potential survey options that we would have about reaching out to county citizens and possibly beyond, about getting additional feedback beyond what's available to us on the thoughts and feelings of county citizens, regional citizens, about the potential Marl project. And I've presented to each of you individually a list of questions for you guys to review individually and then I'll, you know, give you the opportunity now to, to speak up if you'd like to go ahead and continue forward with this process. And then we can, you know, dial in the questions and I'll design and set up the survey and post it on the county websites and Facebook, social media pages, Instagram, things like that.
Okay, thank you, Aaron, for working on this for the commission. I've read over it in your email a couple of times and I'll open the floor for discussion, gentlemen.
Aaron, one solid job on getting this put together. I immediately, whenever you threw it out there as an idea and it came up, I thought that this was also a good idea. And I held off on drafting our letter as a commission to the P S C because I knew we were getting ready to have this conversation. I think that this also enables us to provide quantifiable points whenever we go to these other public officials, i.e. the legislature, the governor's office, at the P S C, with data saying, hey, this is what our citizens actually think. So that, you know, it's not just three commissioners sitting up here. We can point to survey results that if we do this the right way, we can actually lean on this as information that's traceable. And I think it'll, it'll be a powerful tool in that regard. Specifically to the survey questions, I think, Aaron, you did a solid job. One of the ones that I would like to see was, and maybe this isn't even a necessary insert. They tout the benefits, and the benefits are not kind of negligible in specific regards to tax benefits. There's no actual established economic benefits that are going to come through except for potential and distant economic benefits associated with the ability to connect into the project. Because there's nothing planned in the county. I think that we could include a question that specifically says, do the tax benefits that are going to come to the county offset the damage that's going to happen here in the county? And I think that that could be a, another question that we add on if you gentlemen agree with it. But I also think if you can, Aaron, write it in a way such that this is translatable and usable by, I think you provided that suggestion during our last meeting, that we make this survey open-ended enough or transferable enough to where other counties that wanted to do the same thing could just kind of pick this up, plug and play, and then roll it out in their counties as well. So that's my only comment on the substance of the survey itself. As far as rollout, gentlemen, I've, I've done surveys in a bunch of different capacities. One of the things that I've found to be the most effective is we let people, we give them a reward for participating in the survey. If we want survey response, I did it in business school where I did a single Amazon gift card of $50 and we went from getting 20 couple responses to over 2,000. Because the small chance of a reward is something that I think we could, you know, capitalize on here. And to be honest with you, if it costs the county a few hundred bucks to roll this out, but we ended up getting a few thousand survey results that were, you know, the quality that we're looking for, I think that that would be a worthy investment for us as a, as a government that's trying to capture our public's opinion on this matter. So that is a non-substantive thing, but I think it's appropriate for us to consider right now.
My only comment, gentlemen, was related to the rollout, how we go about getting better participation. You know, it's, regardless of opinion one way or the other, I'd like to hear from everybody. It seems we, we do these things in the past and we, we do struggle. I'll just be upfront. We struggle getting a lot of participation. So I, I'd be open for, you know, ideas to get a good, solid, you know, view of, of really how the county feels. And again, that's, like you said, Commissioner Mans mentioned one, one idea there. Shooting from the hip, Commissioner Mans, I don't know whether there's any kind of restrictions on us as a government for giving reward to participate. That's the only thing that popped to my mind.
Yeah, I actually don't think that there would be in this instance. We can call it a cost of the survey implementation because it's, is the function that we're going after an appropriate expense. And absolutely obtaining the public's position on this would absolutely be appropriate. I think we can, you know, run that by the prosecutor if, you know, you guys want a final bless off on that. But from my, from my not attorney position here, I can't say, hey, it's, it's okay. But I can tell you that it's, I, I think it's going to pass whatever, whatever hoops we would have to verify on it. But
Gentlemen, my only comment to, to further extend this is I would like to whittle these questions down. This is obviously too long of a survey. I think we, if we could whittle it down to what do we want, what we could make our primary questions and then have some optional questions as well. But I, I would like to see this whittled down a little bit.
So what number do you think is?
I would think 10 or less questions.
I think, Aaron, I mean, to be honest with you, I'd be comfortable with you also keeping lead on this. If you have question number one, the question that I presented, I actually am in favor of because it gives a direct answer to claims that the, there are claims that we're going to be compensated for this. But if our public can say, hey, here's the compensation, it's still not worth it, that's something that, you know, leaders can look at. And then I think as long as you have questions with regards to, that are tied to impacts, or maybe even, to be honest with you, I don't know about perceptions and mitigation as much, but I think if you categorize the impacts that people are afraid of or that they will experience, not even that they're afraid of, if they think it's going to be a positive impact. If you have questions on impact, you have whether or not they're generally for or against and whether or not they think that the offset is going to occur through the tax base increase. I, I would be satisfied at, at that level.
Looking down through your, you got about five, four or five main topics there, Aaron. I think if, if we feel the need to trim it down some, you could concentrate on two to three questions from those topics. And, and again, I, I do agree, we should add the, the financial standpoint consideration question that Commissioner Mans has mentioned. But again, to trim it down, I think you could go under your five main points there and maybe strike a few that are similar.
Okay.
I, I don't feel the need, and I'll, I'll trust you to come up with the questions. This is just my, my comment as one Commissioner. I, I can trust you with that kind of direction. I don't feel the need that we need to go through each question here today and strike or keep.
And I think, I mean, obviously the substantive, substantive part of this we're looking for is, you know, to get an overall feel of how the, the community feels about this project and then how we as a commission, you know, continue to move forward, whether that be alone or with other entities, other leaders, other county commissions. And I, just so everyone's clear, I, I am perfectly fine with the letter, or the, the question about the financial tax benefits. I, I think that's a good, good piece to add.
As a segue point to that, it's been discussed as a potential of bringing other regional counties in that are also affected by Marl and including them in this, in this survey, or at least reaching out to the other Commissioners via scheduling a regional meeting. Is that something that the commission would be interested in pursuing, if we could work it out?
Yeah, I was going to, that's this kind of, well, that was actually the first part of this agenda item. But we, we skipped on down to the question. I was kind of waiting for clerk to return. So, yeah, the first part of that agenda item, gentlemen, is we discussed somewhat at our last meeting an avenue to work regionally with the other Commissioners on, on exactly what we're talking about here and involving at a more regional scale. So I'll open the floor there for, if, if we are satisfied with our discussion on the questions, we'll move on to that.
I'd actually, just because I don't want to switch back, like to stay on the questions for just a little bit longer so that we can kind of iron that out. But so Aaron's going to whittle down, get a 10-question list, right? We're cool with him doing that. As far as the incentives, what do you gentlemen think? Do y'all want to move forward in pre-authorizing that pending review by the prosecutor's office for compliance with the law?
I do, I, if I may, just interject a quick question. Are we talking about for every survey response or are we talking about the potential to win, say, a $50 gift card?
Potential to win a $50 gift card.
Thank you.
And that's, and that's what you do is at the initial onset of the survey, if you, you know, participate in the survey, your email address is listed as part of the survey response. And then do a drawing at the end of a set period, and it, it tends to dramatically increase participation. If that's a, if that's a direction that we want to go as a county commission in order to get as many responses as possible. And like I said, I think that what we could do is pre-authorize an amount and as long as, you know, Becky gave it the thumbs up, then we can just build it in as part of the process.
Yeah, for that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I was just going to just say, what, what percentage of residents do, would we consider to be? What do we, I guess, do we have a goal? What would be your goal, our number to 5%? 10%? From a survey standpoint, what, what number, I guess, would you guys feel would be successful?
If we got anything above 10%, it would be an incredibly successful survey. I mean, that just, it never happens.
Agreed. I just want to make it sure that we know what that, that we have a standard, I guess, as to what we consider.
But I think that if we look at, just for instance, Aaron, do you know off the top of your head where we're at for comprehensive plan survey updates at this point? This is equally important. I mean, it's not, it's not going to drive as many people. People aren't going to be as passionate about comprehensive planning. And sometimes that'll drive whether or not they participate in a survey, but it is a data point for us.
We've had some successful surveys in the past as well. Not, the comprehensive plan currently is setting at 17 records. But we've had, when we completed the, I'm pulling it up now. The, the industrial scale renewable energy questionnaire, we had 641 responses. And that was a survey that was completed by the county in 2024, May of 2024.
So in theory, 2,000, 2,500 responses would be
Significant.
Okay.
Really, I think if you could get 1,000 quality, quality feedback. And, and many times in surveys is that when you find people that are more passionate about it, we, we, you just tend to get the, the, I should say, the antis a lot more than you do the, the pros. They seem to be more passionate about their opinions than what the pros do.
What would be the plan for getting the word out this is available?
Social media blast would be, I would say that that would be our best. And then we could work with the review on posts and some stuff as well.
I mean, I know there are obviously several community organizations that are actively involved, I'm sure would.
QR codes for easy, easy access, quick links.
Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on the incentive for survey participation?
If I could just say two things, I was thinking, maybe a more reasonable, rather than population of the county, more reasonable milestone would be voter registration, 14,600, something like that. So that's a thought. Would we need to make any kind of exception for either elected, particularly elected officials would have to be accepted from the opportunity to draw?
I think that's great.
And I don't know about employees, but I think it would be real safe to exempt or to prohibit elected from being involved.
Terrific.
Not necessarily being involved, just eligible to win?
Eligible to win, absolutely.
Eligible to win to draw. I think that those are both tremendous additions to the conversation. One of the things that I was going to wonder about is whether or not we could leverage some of the technology that we have available to us to pull the addresses that are provided as verifiable addresses. So we'll get a class of responses, you know, if we're, knock it out of the park and we get 2,000, it might be the case that we can verify 1,500 or 1,200 or 600 as registered voters within the county as well, because we can probably pull from that database. So just as we go to present this data upward, it would give us another data point.
I don't think we would have a way to pull email addresses from.
Yeah, but the physical addresses, I guess.
Yeah, so physical addresses are actually verified inside of the survey. So they're automatically linked to my master database that's currently in place.
Awesome.
But and then, once we export data, we could cross-reference, but that's behind the scenes.
What are we looking at timeframe wise? If we'd have this.
I'll have it by the end of the week.
Rolling.
Give us good, it would give us a good thing, an arrow in the quiver, as it were, by the time that we roll into the conversation, if we get it scheduled with the additional county commissions as well, especially if we can point to a success.
This could be something potentially even utilized by those other counties.
Absolutely, and that's why my point about being county.
Agnostic.
Yeah, agnostic, thank you. County agnostic is basically is, anybody could answer the question of, you know, are you for or against it?
I mean, in regard to the card or, you know, some kind of a reward, you know, I'm not opposed to that at all, provided that there isn't some reason that we shouldn't do it if prosecuting attorney would determine that we should not. You know, and at the end of the day, I kind of agree with Commissioner Mance. A couple hundred dollars, if that's what it costs to do this, and we can get a good feel for what, how the community really feels, have something substantial that we can lean on, you know, I would think that the community, I feel myself as one commissioner, that's a valuable piece of information to have.
Well, along those lines, I think that if you were actually to pay a marketing firm just to do this, you're going to be talking in the upwards of $5,000, $3,000 to $5,000.
The amount that I was going to propose for what it's worth would have been 10 $50 gift cards to Amazon. So $500 total expense and everything else be in-house.
Those will be just selected randomly, assuming we'd have some way to.
Drawing at the end of it, out of the emails.
They'd have to understand at that point, well, we would probably want to make the disclaimer as it says, if you do win this gift card, you, your name may be, you know, announced at a commission meeting because we would obviously have traceability. You guys would want to know who won them. So I'll work that disclaimer in. Prizes you may win, you may be subject to.
Okay, commissioners, do I hear a motion in effect in relation to the survey and how we promote that participation?
I would move that we authorize Aaron to revise the survey list with the guidance that we've talked about in his direction and then publish it as soon as possible pending the results from an inquiry to the prosecuting attorney regarding legality of a $500 total prize for participants.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor in regards to the MARL survey and the participation reward for that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, again, the second part of this is we had discussed some ideas for opportunities to share with the surrounding counties and regions. And I will open the floor for further discussion there, gentlemen, what we think we need to do. We had discussed mainly a possible Zoom meeting that Aaron could set up with the, to start with the surrounding commissioners. Who else we may want to include would be up to you, gentlemen, but we can start there.
And just so everyone's clear, I mean, all the other commissions involved in this line, with the exception, I haven't heard anything, specifically for Mon County, have all agreed to work together regionally as we can. Where I think some of the difficulty has lied is the timing. It's hard to get people at the same time where everyone obviously is extremely busy. So there has been email correspondence, there has not been to this point any type of regional meeting, any type of a Zoom meeting had. There has been cooperation from these other commissions, at least from the commissioners I'm speaking with. They would be like to do that, it's just a matter of planning it, preparing it, ensuring whoever wanted to be there could be there.
What I would propose, gentlemen, is that we also lean on Aaron again to help us come up with a list of possible dates that wouldn't, one, we would be able to have far enough out to where we, everybody can get in compliance with OGMMA and get them notified. So we could send out kind of a survey as to which times would work best for all of the counties to have representation at a single Zoom meeting. Think if people are looking for somebody to, you know, help point the direction in this and Aaron saying, hey, we could host it and we could host up to 100 folks, I would say that we can actually offer to host the meeting once we get kind of a thumbs up from each of the affected counties as to whether or not they could participate in a given date. And at that point, we would have the ability to build out agendas and prepare for the meeting as well.
In doing that, would that be a, are we going to do some type of a written invitation? Is it going to be email? So Clerk Strite, after the last meeting, had provided us with a document from, if you want to elaborate on what that document was, Clerk, from the quiet zone.
That was something that Pendleton County had requested some help on years ago, a couple of years ago, in regard to the national radio silence situation they faced with the naval facility up there at Sugar Grove. They had done a resolution and our commission had reviewed it and rather than remake the will or whatever, just wrote letters stating support for them, they had sent out requests to other counties throughout the state. And that was the one that came to mind. We've done a couple of things like that in times past, specific ones I can't recall beyond that one.
I noticed to this point, all of the support that we've had, obviously, has been through email correspondence. I don't know if there's anything in hand necessarily, with the exception of the resolutions. East County has passed a resolution, but nothing unifying those necessarily.
In that same respect, Commissioner, and what Clerk's saying is, while the resolutions have already been done, as you say, we could use that same approach because obviously that got our attention, that got on our agenda, and that got us to choose to participate. And we could do that, you know. In addition to whatever, you know, my other suggestion is that Aaron put out a, you know, it's easy enough to get a regional commissioner email list, you know. But when you take the effort to get an old-fashioned written document on the table of each commission and asking them to participate, that certainly helps, I think, you know.
It maybe at least could serve is that, I feel like what has maybe lacked here is just that starting. Everyone kind of got on board, but it's getting it jump-started to, okay, here's the beginning of this collaborative effort, essentially.
It's a lot to coordinate, and we're abiding by OGMMA, right? So like everything, if us three and any of the other groups of three want to get together and discuss something.
Well, if I may interject, just a quick question. If you're not technically making any decisions at this meeting, it would be no different than you guys going to an association of counties meeting together or a commission training together. And then you could bring that information back at that point and make a decision. There are discussion and decision, but I don't, I'm not sure that a violation of attending a community of commissioners would be a violation. We could obviously livestream the whole thing, that's not an issue, and make that livestream available.
If, it would probably give us a lot of flexibility to not make it a public meeting and then just livestream it. I'd say that one of the things that it does allow for is it allows for deliberation amongst the attending county commissioners. Even if we all go to a meeting just to take reports, but then if we go to it and it's not noticed, we can't talk amongst ourselves about, you know, the way that we think it's going to impact our county and what we think we're going to do next. So I think there's definitely pros and cons to each. And I'm actually ambivalent as to what we would choose to do. I think, like I said, it would restrict our ability to have communications amongst ourselves during that meeting. But it would allow us probably a little bit more flexibility in, you know, who we would get to be able to attend as well.
Okay, so gentlemen, let's lay out some steps here. Step one, to facilitate this regional meeting.
I'm happy to draft an introductory email to the concept. If we can track down everybody's email addresses and a letter that'll go out in hard copy to introduce this concept. I'll team up with Aaron on how he wants the rollout for the survey to figure out what everybody would be convenient for the participating counties to do, and I'll word that into both of those letters.
I can provide a QR code for a survey or a web address so that they can go on and say which dates work for them, which dates don't.
Awesome.
That's simple enough.
And we will come up with a date, a proposed date for, after we get the survey information. Is that, am I along the, is that what we're thinking there?
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be, and timeline wise, we're talking?
I can get this done within a week. And then what my actual thoughts were is, since Commissioner Brill had been point in actually having these, all pre-established contacts with all these guys, after I get the emails drafted, I can kick everything over to you and then you can go through your distro however you think, because it would kind of be a continuation of conversations you've had.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, are we happy with our plan to move forward then on this topic? Or do we need further guidance or instruction from Mr. Cox?
I do just have one question. As far as timeline, are we thinking we would like to try to get this in in October or November timeline?
My instinct is that we probably ought to kick this out at least a month, just to give everybody time. Because if the county commissions decide that they want to make it into a public meeting on their end, give them enough time to plan around that as well.
And around the, with that note, that rolls us into Thanksgiving. And at that point, the holiday season there, soon thereafter, so.
I would suggest, Aaron, right before Thanksgiving, because, I mean, that's about a month. Because otherwise you get into, you're going to start hurting your participation, I would say.
Yeah, so as far as commissions goes, your next meeting would be on the, well, obviously in October would be the 28th. But in November, your next meeting would be the 11th?
No.
No, because of?
18th.
18th, because of Election Day, right?
No, because we only have one in November.
November, okay.
But, hey, let's just put it out there. But we also have Veterans Day to.
Our Veterans, yeah, Veterans Day is the 11th, I'm sorry.
Yes. So.
So the 10th.
It's a lot harder.
Yeah, the 10th of November.
Target date for completion.
That week.
Yeah, I agree, if you don't get something in done before Thanksgiving, it's going to be after the first of the year.
Yeah.
At least Thanksgiving's late in November this year.
Yeah.
Had been early.
That's what I was sort of looking at, yeah.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen, on far as moving forward with this? Are we clear on a plan here and where you are set to make these initial arrangements?
Good.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Aaron, thank you for your work.
No motion, no motion for the survey to approve, did we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that, okay. Okay, then I'm good, thank you.
All right, our last item on the agenda is the Hampshire County Health Center possible sale process. And I know we were looking for that appraisal. Commissioner Brill, do you have an update there?
When I last spoke with Ms. Keys, it's hopeful to have that in hand this week. So I have not heard from her, Clerk Strite, nothing, okay. Yeah, so we'll hope we have that in hand this week and then we'll be able to get that on the agenda for next month's meeting. Or next, next meeting, 28th.
Okay. That being a key factor in our process there and decision-making tool. I don't know if there's anything else we need to touch on that today. Does either commissioner have any further comment or?
No, but I'll, prior to the next meeting, I'll dive into, especially if we get the, especially if we do get the appraisal and I'm able to actually plug that into our BTI calculations that we were looking at, and also the guidance for working with local institutions as well. So I'll try to develop a, kind of a range of options that we can talk about at our next meeting as soon as we get that appraisal and the numbers come in.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Brill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that'll be an agenda item for our next meeting there, Clerk. And that gets us through our normal agenda. We are running behind today. But before we go to our unscheduled housekeeping items, the rest of those, I would open the floor for any public comment at this time. And we're down to two folks left, but Chief, do you have anything?
I don't have anything unless you guys have any questions for me.
Well, he has a stack of things here.
There's a ton of exemptions in his operations, but I got them in late, so next meeting.
I didn't know if you guys wanted to peruse them on your own or?
Can you give us a brief update on your proposal that you just sent out with regards to possible funds? I think that went out yesterday or went up yesterday, hopefully.
So the state is looking at receiving approximately $100 million over the next five years per year from the federal government for some rural healthcare funding. I put out a couple of ideas to the delegates regarding how rural EMS could use it. Us, Minister Hardy, I think we're involved in that email. Our biggest fight is a training center in the area. We have no good training center that we can do joint training with fire, EMS, the high school level, or volunteers as well. So I put that out there as an idea of something we could bring to this area, as well as aging equipment, ambulances, cardiac monitors, things like that. Put out some ideas for some telehealth. Put out some ideas for some telehealth, and as well as community paramedicine, just to get community paramedics out to households. A lot of times you can prevent transports and prevent multiple comebacks to the hospitals, which will help the hospital significantly as well. So, just threw out some ideas of how we could utilize some of that funding if we were given the opportunity. But that's all I had. Do you have any questions on that? I think you all were included in the email.
And, well, just, just for clarification for the public, Chief, what's, when approached by the state, state representation there, what, what was their goal as far as laying that out and introducing that?
I think they just wanted to see how we could utilize on the EMS side. I knew they already spoke with several hospitals in the area of how they could utilize the, the revenue. I think the state can, it's guaranteed a hundred million dollars a year, up to two hundred million if they request. So, they're looking at how they could request the maximum amount to try to get as much, as much feedback as they can to create a proposal, and then I believe they created a proposal and added a lot of our ideas, my ideas, in with the other counties as well as the healthcare centers in the area. So, hopefully, they, they get a good fight and get some of that money into our region. I'm sure they'll split it evenly throughout all the counties, but hopefully, a lot of it comes back to our region, and that'll help significantly with some of the deficits in, in rural EMS and rural healthcare as a whole, so.
My only comment was that by the time that that request came in, it was kind of short notice, and I just know through conversations with Chief that he'd been leaning forward and kind of looking towards aspirationally what are the, some of the bigger projects that we want to line up for the community, and I was familiar with your training center concept by the time that you were able to include it. So, good work on leaning ahead, and thank you for.
Thank you.
Getting it up there.
And sorry for all the exemptions and exonerations. We've been going through those the last two months. It's a lot, a lot of labor, because you know President Eglinger, we've been going out and making visits to the sites and, and things. I would like to at some point propose some changes to the ordinance, maybe to streamline it, make it a little bit easier for everyone if we can have some time to sit down and talk about it, but that's all I have. Do you guys have anything else for me? All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Andy, do you have any questions for us, clarification or anything?
No.
All right. Clerk, what else do you have for us? Just invoices?
I'll have to.
Thank you. So, only because we are doing invoices right now, I'm just going to have this general, very, very general conversation, and I hope it's an aspirational one for us. Conversation that we had downstairs as well, is that some of the accounting software that the county is bringing in is hopefully going to be able to help us see this information and then kind of understand what its significant, significance is in relation to the budget, like, I think a cool thing that we could aim towards is, where does each of these expenses chart, or total expenses chart us along our trajectory and project it out across the county? Because it's, it's kind of hard for us to look at this and understand the significance of any given invoice that we receive is either in-line or out-of-line, or an anomaly for just a month, and our obligation to the public is to be as, you know, informed as we can.
It's better than it used to be, but there's opportunity, absolutely.
Yep, but, yeah, and like I said, it's, I'm actually very hopeful in the conversations that we've, we have had downstairs, especially with the new software coming onboard, but just, no, that's, that's a line of effort that we're looking at, gentlemen, as to.
Yeah, rather than having to go back to your front sheet to see what the fund balance was at the end of last month, you know, back and forth, hopefully, this will give us a little more real-time.
Yeah.
Picture of what the expenditures look like, as opposed to budget. Seeing electricians reminds me, the, we're very wisely scheduled, our transfer of the electrical entrance service yesterday during our holiday, so we are now in three phases.
Oh, really?
The building services complete.
And do I remember right from my tour, that that's going to pave the way for HVAC upgrades as well?
It, it gives, it's going to help us, yes. That's a potential. Should we should choose to.
Yeah.
Go that route. My personal, and it's not important, but my personal opinion is, we really need to get a good analysis of what an HVAC system would do in this building, because it's different then. That's.
Not fair. In the boiler system downstairs is also this building and the next building, right? Oh, it's not, that's, that's.
It was built to take care of all three of these buildings.
And my notes weren't as good as I thought.
This is the only building serviced by the roller now.
Okay.
You know, they, they got, in two thousand and eleven, when that building was, two thousand and ten, was upgraded through grants and stuff, because before I got here, they got an HVAC system in there, and nobody's happy. Everybody's either cold or hot.
Really?
And it's worse over at the judicial center, so.
Like many splits, you just put many splits in everywhere, and then everybody's happy.
That's, you know, but they're expensive, and then you overhaul them every ten years.
Yeah, the upkeep on them, that's what I've heard a lot of people say, is they're.
We replaced a bunch of them already. So, I mean, you know.
And even with those things, not everybody's happy. We have instances where there's folks, there's multiple people in like same one little room, and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But it's going to be hard to beat the efficiency of the, the old coal burner on this building.
Well, that circulating hot water, you know, but that doesn't do anything for air conditioning.
No.
You know, it is.
Right.
But with what we were able to put into our circulator fans, and hopefully with, you should have seen the wires they took out of there, so our, our furnace should be much more reliable just with the new wiring that these guys have installed into it. And that might buy us a year, two, three, five, whatever, to let technology for this type of building come to us, or analysis, whatever it takes. In the meantime, you can't beat the price. And I don't think we're polluting the atmosphere significantly. It's a rare day you smell coal smoke around me.
Okay, gentlemen, you get a chance to see what you needed to see through the invoices there.
I did. I would move that we approve the invoices as submitted.
Second? Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve all invoices since our last meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. We did have some exemptions there that the chief brought in. I know they've been working pretty diligently on that. There's a lot of them. I was going to suggest that we take a chance to look them over before the, the next meeting. We, we could look at them today. It's, it's rightfully so under the unscheduled items there, but being that they've been diligently working on that, I think we need to look through those and decide on those.
I can make them available for whenever y'all would care to look at them individually, or have.
Yeah, it's too much for Eric to try to send us digitally, but we'll have to stop in and look at them, but and as Chief mentioned there, there are, I looked over the ordinance. I, I think it is clear on, on some of the issues that they are struggling with, however, it, it's clear in the ordinance, but it's perhaps scattered. Part of what they're looking at's on page one, part, this is just example. Part might be on page seven, and part might be on page eight, you know. I don't know whether some, some effort on our part to concentrate the, certain subjects that there's, that they struggle with on these exemptions, you know, concentrate a paragraph a little differently, for lack of better words, but I think it's all there, but it's, it's not all there when they have a certain example, let's say, to exempt or not exempt. So, get a chance, gentlemen, look at that, see what you think, but I, I do think it's covered, but it's, maybe we could make it a little more clear and a little more, summarize it a little better, I guess, is, is an, is an opportunity there in helping to understand, both for the public and, and for our HCSA as they navigate through who deserves an exemption and who does not, so. That's all I have, gentlemen, so if nothing else from you guys, we can adjourn.
So, moved. Second?
All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.